Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Carisville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and pledge.
I'm in light of the Thanksgiving coming up, for our invocation tonight, I'm going to read Psalms 100. This is Psalm of David, Psalm 100. Make a joyful noise unto the Lord, all ye lands; serve the Lord with gladness; come before his presence with singing. Know ye that the Lord he is God; it is he that hath made us, and not we ourselves. We are his people, and the sheba of his pasture. Enter into his gates with thanksgiving, and into his courts with praise. Be thankful unto him, and bless his name; for the Lord is good, his mercy is everlasting, and his truth endureth to all generations. This is the word of the Lord. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's take the roll, please.
Carrie Hyde, Ward 1. Carrie Hyde.
There you go.
Jay Spat, Ward 2. Kerry Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Catherine, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you. Julia, the first item is the approval of our council meeting minutes from November 7th. The council event an opportunity to review these minutes, and now be the opportunity to make any edits if any are necessary. If there are none, a motion is in order. Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manino, get us started out tonight with the first of three second reading of ordinances that you have. First one is alcohol ordinance, section 4-7, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The first ordinance, again, these are second rings. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading. As we had noted, these were added to strengthen some security aspects of the existing alcohol ordinance. The first one dealt with gambling, and the Alcohol Control Board did recommend approval of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion is in order. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, any opposed, like sign? We'll say the motion carries unanimously. Next one, please, Randy.
The second one dealt with package sales. Cameras are already required, security cameras. This just, again, strengthens the language in that, and Alcohol Control Board did recommend approval.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion is in order.
I'll second it.
Got a motion as second, all in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last one for you, Randy.
And the third one deals with on-premise consumption and the requirement for cameras on that, and the Alcohol Control Board did recommend approval on this one also.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion on item 4-114? If there's not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porter, you have an ordinance as well, second reading?
Yes, Mayor, this is the second reading of an ordinance that will modify some language within the purchasing guidelines. Some of it cleaned up some language that we've had that's been outdated. The other portion of it will allow department heads to make purchases up to $2,500 without receiving prior approval, and then anything between $2,500 and $7,500 needs approval by the city manager. Anything above $7,500 will require council approval, and I recommend this for the city council.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion on this item? If not, a motion is in order. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have got the first reading of a zoning request, Z20-04. Mr. Manino, if you'll get us started on that one, please, sir.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. First, I'd like to note, this application has been properly posted, and adjacent property owners have been notified. There appears to be no conflicts of interest on this. This is approximately a 50-acre tract at Overlook Parkway, out of a 339-acre tract. The applicant is proposing to rezone it from Office Commercial and R20 to MF14 for a multifamily apartment complex with 336 units. This is adjacent to a 210-unit zoning request that was previously approved, that is between the subject property tonight and a true hotel. Of this, it was also brought up during, I believe it was brought up during the previous discussions, when we were looking at apartment units and number of units, and that also entailed the city going ahead and taking a look at some numbers of apartments and the number of bedrooms in those apartments, and putting together all the data to try to get an overall picture of the multifamily that we have on the books here in the city of Carisville. That information was also included in your package. It's still draft, we're still modifying it and molding it as we get more data in. With that, this application was reviewed based on the standards for exercise of zoning powers from our zoning ordinance, and with that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy at this point? Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll open up a public hearing for Z20-04, and ask anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, to do so at this time. And when doing so, if you'll please give your name and your address for our clerk, please, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Is it okay if I take this off?
Absolutely.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rob Jordan. I'm at 4200 Northside Parkway, Atlanta, Georgia 30327. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to staff also for hearing this tonight. Just a quick background, I'm the lead partner in a ownership group. We bought this property back in 2006, and as Mr. Manino said, it's about 340 acres. It goes all the way up to Center Road and fronts all over 75, and comes down almost to 113 Main Street there. We have a 100-foot wide easement that goes through the middle of that property there that he's showing underneath us there. You know, we've been stakeholders up here for about 15 years as property owners, and we've watched the city grow, and we've been very impressed with the city. And what we've seen is, as we've watched things, is you've had more employment come up here, you've had more amenities, you've had more attractions, and your growth has been really high-quality, in our opinion. And so, what we think is that there's a lot of folks that want to be a part of that, want to live here, and live around this area. Always have, but I think it's even more so now. What we think those people want, they're basically work professionals, working professionals. And what those people want is, they want to have the flexibility that an apartment community offers. They want it to be new, they want it to be state-of-the-art, they want to have the lock-and-leave sort of lifestyle sometimes. They want good access to the interstate, and they want good access to major attractions like downtown. And we think that our site is fortunate in that it can offer a lot of that. So we think this project that we've designed sort of meets that demand. Just to summarize it, as Mr. Manino did, it's 336 units, it's Class A. It's market rate, it's not any sort of affordable housing or anything like that. It's on about 50 acres of the land that we own, so it's about seven units an acre. You know, when we designed this and this concept, what we loved about it is the amount of green space that you can have in a site like this. And you can see the big park behind one of the buildings on the northern side there that's got a lot of communal space for working professionals that want to hang out in that kind of area. And then we thought about it, and we were talking to the true hotel people, and we're talking about the Pine Mountain Trail system. So we thought it'd be really neat to have a trail that comes, a trailhead that starts behind a park like that and goes through our property down to the south, as he's pointing, that eventually, hopefully, would connect with the Pine Mountain Trail. Of course, there's some other owners in between that we'd organize with, but the true hotel folks really like that idea too. So we really like this design, it is conceptual. So the buildings, you know, once we do the topography and so forth, might change slightly, but I think this concept is basically what we're talking about here, and certainly the unit count, it wouldn't change. The, you know, it's rugged terrain, but I think our plan takes advantage of that and doesn't really fight it. And I think, to me, I think the people that live in a place like this would feel like they're somewhere up in the mountains, in a forest, with a lot of natural woods around them, and I think that'd be really neat. These are all one- and two-bedroom units. You know, we think that working professionals is what they're looking for. We see a lot of demand for ones, and the twos, we see some twos, but we also see people during this sort of changed mindset of the pandemic that are actually taking a two-bedroom, and they'll office in one room and they'll live in the other. You know, so it's kind of a new thing that people are doing that we think is real. So, you know, I think it's something that we can all be really proud of, and I'll leave it up to any questions anybody has.
How many buildings will it take to?
Well, so this plan right here, I believe is six buildings. And again, I'd like to look at that if possible as a placeholder idea. I mean, I'm not sure exactly.
I understand it's going to change because of topography. I'm just trying to get a general idea.
Oh, absolutely, that's a great question. And I think that, you know, I think that we might go a little bit smaller buildings, but one more, two of them versus the long, because that topography, once it changes. We'd like to stay away from retaining walls. What we like about where we can put this is it's on the, obviously, the pretty good part of this property here. We've got a nice slope going up, but I think that that topography would dictate a little bit the exact layout.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, the Planning Commission did put a recommendation on there for no three or more bedrooms here.
Thank you.
With the, if I'm not mistaken, there's another apartment complex proposed right before you.
Yes, sir.
And how, have you worked with that group there in your design work?
Yes, sir.
Have you talked to them about how that's going to look together?
That's a good question. So we know CF Lane pretty well, and we supported their application. We think just good growth is good growth. And so, you know, we've been in touch with Mr. Mullenach as he's reviewing their plans, and I think they're starting to really come forth with their several plans. You know, the easement exists, and when we bought the property, that was a big part of it, having that 100-foot wide easement. And the idea was he'd have an 80-foot wide road, and then you'd have 10 feet on each side for utilities, basically, and that was good design. And that's there. The one I've seen, maybe last week, I've seen the first iteration of their plan where they did not continue the road all the way up to the property line. The easement's there, so the access is there no matter what. But I was a little surprised, and I didn't know if the fire department might comment on that to them and say, you know, we need to see this road continue on for fire protection. But of course, that's up to the city. But we, you know, we're certainly talking to them, and they know that we're in application, and we supported theirs, so we're, you know, we're in good communication.
What other communities have you done projects like this before?
So we've, two last projects that we've been involved with, we had 841 Memorial Drive, which is down in Belt Line, city of Atlanta, and then we've got one in Mobile, close to Mobile Bay, off Highway 98. It's in a little town called Fairhope, Alabama. And we have one right now in process in Browsington. I say in process, it's in a zoning process in Browsington.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Jordan?
Yes, Mayor, I had one. Some people called my office and asked what was going to be the price points on these units.
That's a great question. So, you know, we think that where we've kind of modeled this for now, based on our unit sizes, is you'd have the one-bedrooms kind of averaging out in the $1,150 a month range, and those twos would get up into the $1,400. So, you know, it's $1,000 plus, we think, is where it is. And we're going, you know, y'all know this, we're going to charge as much as possible.
Well, yes. I would expect you to do so.
Everybody's moving in the right direction, but I think that's, that feels right. That feels like where I think these professionals can afford to pay and what they're willing to pay.
Any other questions?
Your timeline, so say this does get moved to the zoning and proof, what's your timeline kind of look like? Are you going to sit on it for a little while?
No, I think that's a great question. I think the time is now. I mean, I think that, again, what we've seen is, we've seen a lot more people that want this kind of product up in these areas now, and that's why we're pursuing a couple of them right now, like I mentioned. So I feel like this is a great time. I think that people are in the right mindset, you've got the right kind of employment. You know, I think this is something we'd like to try to push forward. And I don't know all the permitting, you know, I don't know the way the city permits and so forth and so on, but I can't speak to exact timing, but that's our idea.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I got a question for Mr. Jordan. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing relative to Z20-04, and council will take this up for final consideration. Our next meeting, it is December the 5th. It is a morning meeting, 9 o'clock start. The 3rd, thank you. Dan? If I'm here on the 5th, I'll be here by myself, December the 3rd.
Never mind.
That's right. All right, Randy, you've got the next item as well, swimming pool fence requirements.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed text amendment to our building code dealing with the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. Right now, there's currently a waiver in there for fencing around a pool if they have the lockable safety cover. There's actual spec for that actual cover, but I don't have that with me at the moment. But with that, we brought it before you in July, let you know what we were trying to move forward and do. We went through the DCA, got our response from them, and we're now bringing it back before you, and do recommend approval to the text amendment that'll eliminate the waiver of the fence requirement, meaning they will be required to do a fence even with a lockable safety cover on a swimming pool.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Randy on this item?
Do I have the grandfather?
Well, right now, anybody that has a pool has to have a fence around it. I don't know that there have been any that have been installed with a cover without a fence.
No, nobody's actually requested this yet under these changes to the International Swimming Pool Code, but before they do, we're looking to go ahead and make this change. So fences will still remain required, even if they do have that lockable gate.
But yes, anybody with a previous pool would be grandfather with respect to what? Any previous pool should have been built with a fence. What does this spec pertain to?
Well, it spells out ANZ, the International Safety Code, ANZ number, this, this, and this. And again, I could go downstairs and get it for you, but.
I didn't know what the, I'll look it up, I didn't know what the spec.
It's a specification of the actual type of lockable safety cover.
And the DCA came back with no comment?
That is correct.
And have you got any comment from any local?
They had, it was written in about two pages, and said no comment.
Yeah, I read that.
And addressed to me at the city of Norcross. So, and again, that's what I received back from the state.
With a September 4th, 40/40 date?
For, that you, exactly, you saw that.
Neither myself or Randy are hoping more work against the 40/40.
Correct.
Have you gotten any input from pool companies in the area? Has there been anybody that's commented one way or the other on it?
We have not, because none of the pool companies have requested this at the time, and our building official does have, you know, life safety is one of his major concerns, and, you know, his concern is that several of them end up out there. And again, but none of them have inquired, and none of them have looked to actually build one without a fence at the moment.
Okay.
So he was trying to get ahead of that.
All right, thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions, I would just hear more, gather information. I'm afraid, or, no, I don't want to move down there. If anybody has any questions, specifically.
Thank you. I'll make sure that you can match up, if you've got any questions about the ordinance, now you know to reach out to Randy and kind of get any clarification.
Yes.
And then if you've got any concerns, obviously, you can reach out to anybody on council to get that. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything else for Randy? Thanks, sir. Again, first reading will take this up on December the 3rd for consideration. And now we continue the Randy Manino Show with the next item, go ahead.
This is our annual update to the capital improvements element and work program for the city. We're required to do this because we have an impact fee ordinance on the books in Carisville, even though we don't collect impact fees, because we've amended our fee schedule for that. Again, we do this every year, we go through a five-year work program, but we do amend it every year because that's what they require. And with that, I will remind you, which you probably already knew, it needs to be opened up also as a public hearing with this. Once y'all approve the resolution, I'll transmit it to the Department of Community Affairs, and in the 30-day review period, we can continue to make changes to the document if we get any input in the next 30 days. And then it'll be brought back before you in a final version, probably towards the end of January.
Okay, thank you. I will open up a public hearing for the capital improvements element and the community work program. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for that, and turn it over to council for consideration. Motion to approve. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hampton, you are up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Here tonight requesting authorization for the mayor to sign this inter-participant transaction with the city of Calhoun. Basically, you know, as we're in line with all the other cities in the state, we're required to keep a 15% reserve capacity level on our generation, and we're just hair under that 15%, so in order to stay in compliance, this transaction would satisfy a shortfall by purchasing some of Calhoun's surplus generation at the amount of $6 per kilowatt for 473 kilowatts. Keith has reviewed the documents, everything looked good to him also, and this would just be broken down on normal billing cycles, nothing severely changed there, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions, comments, or motion? Motion to approve.
Thank you.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Derek.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Mr. Jones, you are up.
Good evening. First up is our filter rehab project. These are on filters 1 through 3 and 7. This was actually originally approved back in December of 2018. Because of the way we have to work on these things, we had to allow about 90 days for each filter. And then there's a commissioning time, so it winds up being roughly, or wound up being roughly four months per filter to complete these, and we're kind of wrapping this up. We had a slight COVID delay in there as well, but we have got the actual rehab work finished, and I'm happy to report that we are under budget. The, as originally approved, the contract was $928,000. We, that was significantly under what we anticipated, so we expanded the scope of work to take in some additional things we needed to do. And the project was authorized for $1,178,363. We completed for $1,151,899. That's a $26,464 underrun on that project, and ask for your approval of this final change order, and we will close the project with heavy constructors that did the work.
Fantastic. Any discussion, and if not, a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Bob.
Yes, sir. This is our annual blanket purchase order for bulk chemicals used at both the water and wastewater treatment plants. We had, I knew I was going to lose this number, we had approximately 15 bidders. There are 13 successful, it's a line item bid for each chemical. This was advertised on the state procurement website. We, of course, directly solicited bids from our current vendors at the time, and have arrived at this collection of vendors for next year. I will spare everyone the agony of reading through all of these chemicals and vendors, you have that before you. There were multiple products that had cost increases, we had some slight decreases. But the good news is, is that when we look at our anticipated volume and unit pricing here, this all should fall within our budgeted amounts, so we are netting out good on these. Would ask that you give us approval to make these purchases going forward. The prices are firm and will be held until October 31st of next year.
Outstanding. Any questions for Bob on this chemical purchase? If there are none, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Bob. Mr. Ryan Hart, you've got the last two items for us this evening.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I will be presenting the first reading of the ordinance for the fiscal year 2020 budget ordinance amendment. We're getting close to getting the fiscal year enclosed and already completed. As a result of the completion of the fiscal year 2020 close, the general funds, special revenue funds, and the SPOSS fund budgets need to be amended. This process of amending the budgets is done annually, and is done usually about this time of the year, before the final year enclosed is done. And we'll bring the general funds, special revenue funds, and SPOSS funds back into compliance with generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP standards. These adjustments reflect the necessary changes needed to bring the budgets back into compliance, and where the revenues equal the expenses and mirror the actual year-to-date revenues and expenses in each fund. Again, this is the first reading of this ordinance, no vote is needed tonight.
Thank you, Tom, that was my line.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And finally, we'll be looking at the fiscal year September 2009, I'm sorry, September 2020, and comparing it to September 2019 financial report. And the general fund, revenues decreased from last September by $833,000. If you remember, we had a large auditors adjustment from 2019 that makes a large portion of that. Expenses decreased by $383,000. Two reasons, the revenue I look at is the local office and sales tax have a decrease there of about $69,000. If you remember, last month, I brought up the fact that there was a $116,000 adjustment that was found, and it needed to be, according to our auditors, needed to be tucked in or put into last year's budget, so that reflects a large portion of that difference there. The billing permits and inspection fees, there's about an $8,000 increase in those fees. Water and super fund, revenues decreased over last September by $182,000. Expenses increased by $390,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, increased capital expenses, decrease in debt service, and decrease in transfers to the general fund. And the general, I'm sorry, and the gas fund. Revenues have decreased over last September by $683,000. Expenses have decreased by $696,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase gas, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. And the electric fund, revenues have decreased from last year by $204,000. Expenses decreased by $152,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase electricity, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. Stormwater fund, revenues decreased from last year by $77,000. There was a capital lease proceed that was received in 2019 that we've not gotten this year. I don't expect to be getting anything until we actually purchase equipment. While the expenses increased in the stormwater fund by $16,000, this is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. And the solid waste fund, revenue decreased from last September by $23,000, and expenses decreased by $239,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. And finally, the fiber optics fund, revenues increased from last September by $36,000. Expenses decreased by $69,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. And finally, let me discuss just briefly the cash position of the city. And the total unrestricted cash balances increased slightly in September, and the total restricted decreased slightly. So we've got an increase in unrestricted and a decrease in restricted. So we've got an increase in unrestricted and a decrease in restricted.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Tom, thanks for putting this together. I know they're working hard to get the audit done, but just want to point out, council, I shared in the memo, basically with the general fund, true apple's apple's comparison because we did receive some of the CARES Act money in the September of this year, but pulling out same dollars we received last year and last fiscal year and this fiscal year, the general fund actually is in about two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-dollar better position than we were last year this time. Proper tax dollars will be coming in in the next couple of months, primarily along with sales tax, as long as the sales tax dollars keep holding up as they have been, we should be hopefully in a better shape as we go forward in the rest of this fiscal year.
This basically is kind of the position we're typically in this time of year.
It is, it is, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, just like I said, just want to point out, we did receive the CARES Act money, we'll get some additional, and the rest of that will be reported in the October month, but again, it's going to give you apples.
We actually got a portion of it in July and the rest of it in September.
That's all right, that's a correction, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom on the financial report? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else that needs to come forward, council, this evening? I do want to take just a minute and offer our very best to our friend David Hardigree, and thank you to Randy for handling the AV duties this evening and doing a mediocre job at that. Great job, as always. Also want to make sure everybody knows, obviously, city offices will be closed next Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving holidays. Tommy Sanders reports that if your garbage pickup is on Thursday or Friday of next week, that will be picked up on Monday. If you have garbage pickup on Monday or Tuesday, those will be done on Tuesday. So slight adjustment, and I'm sure we'll push something out from the city.
Yes, sir.
To make sure people know that, and hopefully not a two-thirty a.m. robo-call to remind people of that. But do want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and that's about all I've got. Anybody else have anything to add? Other than the football playoffs for Carisville starts next Friday, and go Canes on that.
Who do they play?
To be determined.
They're really good.
Always a tough, never know what you're going to get out of them. Chair, want to take a motion to adjourn?
No.
There you go.